For our thank you back to come to the session of City of South Fulton. Mr. President, call the orifice.
Mayor William Bill Edwards, Mayor Proton Mark Baker, Councilmember Catherine Ralph, Councilmember Carmen Lee Douglas, Councilmember Helen C. Willis, Councilmember Nina Gilliard, Councilmember Rosie Jackson, and Councilmember Lee. Present. Mr. Mayor, you have a question. Call the first act. First item is a presentation by the Assistant City Manager Melanie Winfield cultivating transparency and visibility. Ms. Wilson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So again, my name is Melanie Winfield and I serve as the Assistant City Manager. And as the administration or the staff tries to live up to the council's demand to create an open and transparent government, I'm excited to stand before you and present to you some of the items that we have to lead us in that effort. So in addition to our website...
Make sure it's to the left.
So in addition to our website, we have Open Gov, ClearPoint Strategy, Intercom, Esri, and C Click Fix. So the Open Gov platform is intended to connect and provide information via our platform so that residents can better assess our operations, whether it be financial or economic development opportunities. And with the ClearPoint Strategy, that is a tool that we're engaging to help us assess our performance and to assure that we're meeting those performance targets that have been set for us. Intercom is the vendor that we have engaged to assist us with carrying out our strategic planning session. And Esri is our geographical information system that helps us be able to better gauge and plot different activities within the city, be able to create heat maps and track daily activities as they're happening in the city. C Click Fix is a mobile application that residents can use and be able to submit information to us in real time and be able to track that information in the system. C Click Fix is again a mobile app platform and some of the items have launched on the website as of October 9th, our open records request, economic development opportunities, well as some of our communications. So those items are available on the website currently, but Phase Two will have additional rollouts with some of our more engaging departments. And we're collecting data from the different departments this week and look to have all of the departments online by November the 5th, as well as with the mayor's call center by December 31st. And with the mayor's call center, most of the residents are used to the tell line for reporting those community development activities. And so that platform will eventually roll into the mayor's call center so that we're not being flipped to having a different platform for accomplishing the same task. The C Click Fix, this is a visual of what it looks like on the city's website currently. Let me back up. One of the issues that we're finding with the C Click Fix is that the Google Maps, we're having challenges with them with the city being new and the Google Maps being able to identify geographical boundaries. So we're working with Google, we submit the request, however they try to give us an estimated time for having those issues completed. But in the meantime, as we transition to Esri, the GIS platform, that will no longer become an issue because we will be able to have the different overlays and different infrastructure and those items will fit that GIS platform so we will be able to better track the data without having to engage the Google Maps system. Again, the C Click Fix, this is what you will see on the website today. Again, we have the open records request functional available as well as economic development with those other features coming online by November the 5th. Our strategic plan, the council, mayor, and some of the key administrative staff participated in a strategic planning session at Carl Vincent at the end of September. And as a result of that engaging session, there were five big buckets that were identified by council as strategic priorities for the city. And so those buckets are identified here and to guide the city's efforts and to make sure that we're aligning with the council's priorities, our strategic plan will focus on those five big buckets that are identified here. And to further assist with the strategic planning, as I say, Intercom is the vendor that has been selected to assist us with developing that strategic plan to make sure that our efforts are aligned with council's visions and to just document what the plan is and align with that. And here you find some of the other areas that Intercom has, well, some of the other municipalities, some of our neighboring cities in which Intercom has worked, performed services similar to what we have engaged in the city of South Fulton. So the whole goal of the strategic plan is to help us be able to identify where we want to go, be able to find the route in which we want to get there, and then to hold us all accountable for making sure that we stay on course with the strategies that have been identified in that strategic plan. And so the document that Intercom will help us create will be a tool that we use to make sure that we stay focused and engaged on the task before and remain on that path and not allow any distractions or deviations to take us off course. The strategic plan timeline is included here, includes for Intercom to engage with again the administration as well as council and mayor to make sure that the document, as it's being presented, clearly articulates and identifies those strategies that have been identified by council. If you will know, we plan to have the document finalized by December or January. Again, the strategic plan outcomes will be basically driven by those strategic priorities that were identified by council during the strategic planning session. Then we'll set those strategic initiatives to align with that, finalize the vision, the mission, and values, and then develop our marketing strategy and just execute the plan as it is presented. Again, we're also looking to engage and garner support and input from the community as we're developing this plan. So where we are today, as I say, Intercom has been the vendor selected to lead us in the strategic planning effort. The strategic planning team will meet with key staff members, department heads next week, and then from there they'll be engaging with other key stakeholders. Also, with this in Phase Two, we will have key performance indicators that we will work with the different department heads, again, another tool for council as well as constituents to hold the team accountable for making sure that we're delivering on those services that have been identified as priorities and another tool to hold us accountable. And from there, once the KPIs have been identified, they will be incorporated into the ClearPoint Strategy, and we're looking to have that done by January 2019. And ClearPoint, again, is just a tool that we have engaged to help us monitor and manage and track our performance to make sure that we're living up to the expectations that have been set for that administration. With the ClearPoint Strategy, we also will have a dashboard available, again, that shows those incremental progresses for the public, council, mayor, and others to be able to track our progress and to ensure that we're meeting those targets that have been set for us. Then we also have the Open Gov platform. We're looking to have that information, the Open Gov platform available by November the 5th. We're in the process of gathering the necessary data now. One of the key areas that we wanted to highlight was the financial information that will be available through this platform on the website. And so we'll have a check register where you can actually see the check number, be able to see what that check was, what was associated with that check in terms of the services that were provided, what the goods that were provided for that, be able to see who it was made out to. So we're looking forward to a very comprehensive system where you can track and see how we're With the Esri, again, that is the GIS software that we're using to be able to track the city's different infrastructure, the activities within the city. Again, this will be a tool that we can use to track whether it be crimes in different areas where we can create those heat maps, again, to be able to know where our different infrastructures such as our streets and our traffic signs and our traffic signals and those type of things. We'll be able to create those overlays. We're in the process of gathering data from Fulton County now that will be incorporated into this system so that will be a comprehensive tool that will be able to better track and monitor our activities and our tools. And so how do we get there with all of our activities? We're just setting clear goals, committing and uniting to those team goals, sticking to our plan, making sure that we hold each other accountable, and adjusting and continuous improvement so that we can make any necessary adjustments in a quick and expedient manner where necessary. So at this point, I would entertain any questions that you have.
Before I go to this, one of the things that I constantly hear from colleagues is information communication being given to them, asking what we're saying. I know we got a lot of dates under the twenty's, I don't even say that we're going to be here. What do we have in place to let those appear when we achieve the goal that we set?
So some of the things we're planning to do is to do press releases as well as public conferences to be able to...
No, I think he's talking about updating them, not the public. And so I think the first thing with that is this is the first step of that. So the, I'm sorry, second step. You had your strategic planning session at the University of Georgia, I don't remember the day, I know you guys remember. And so that was your first step. Your second step is now what we've put into place is procure the vendor to help us actually implement this process. And so the next thing they'll do is actually meet with council and help define these tentative dates. So their first order of business is to meet with council members one-on-one to make sure that what we got out of the strategic planning is what council got out and that this process goes in that direction. From then on, those tentative dates, I think you heard Ms. Winfield talk about the dashboard, we'll actually be able to publicly monitor it both with council as well as the public at the same time. And so that's kind of how it'll be carried out. I don't remember all of the five buckets off the top of my head, Mr. Stark is going to go over that with you guys when he meets with you. But once everybody has confirmed that we're on the same page, that timeline will be a public timeline that you will actually be able to monitor our progress throughout. And so I think, could you go back, Ms. Winfield, to your slides with the times on it?
So there are different timelines for different activities.
I think that's something important to note. So following your meeting, the group that we have procured to actually carry us through this process, their first job was to come back with the department head and debrief on this is the direction that council is going to go in, and they set those meetings. And this is very similar to what they've done for, I think they're in five of the six, five or six South Fulton cities. So they come in, meet with the department head, that has happened the 24th, 26th, and 29th, and then the next step is to actually meet with council to kind of go over that information as well. And so from there, you guys will kind of lead this process to develop, this is where we are, this written booklet or strategic plan that we come up with, here are your insights, and you'll be able to follow it on a bi-weekly basis almost on where we are and where we're going. The only difference with that is the performance measures that we will develop together will kind of be based on an annual basis. So you will probably measure, and again, you haven't met with the vendor yet, but once you do, you'll decide if you want to review these monthly, quarterly, if it's an annual review, how you look at the performance metrics to get to these goals.
I was calling this word, but you look at strategy and performance, you have the date after the 25th, that 26th, 29th. Okay, so once that is done, you can leave to my colleagues up there to have these dates, this is what I will be done.
So yes, but we wouldn't actually do that. So that's the vendor who's carrying that process out. So he would come back and say, Mayor Edwards, you and your colleagues met with Carl Vincent Institute, this is what you came up with. We relayed this to staff and these are ways that they've identified to get this done. So he had to meet with them before he meets with you. Do you follow what I'm saying, Mayor? So we wouldn't report out on that because this third-party implementation group is going to manage that process with you.
And it's fine, it's the only thing that I can say, I didn't know so.
Well, now there's a different way that y'all would want that to happen, if it is. I mean, it's not a problem.
I don't know what the answer is. I'm just saying that I want to make sure that communication goes both ways and that they know what's going on.
Absolutely. So if we haven't been clear on that, this is council wants Open Gov, really, council wants a transparent government, period. And so the big goal, or one of the big items that council has said to put in place is the strategic plan. Council has also made it clear that not only do they want to be involved, they want to make sure before we finalize that the public is involved. And so what has happened is we have, the city has had a bunch of different tools that are all over the place, right, Mayor? So what we have done is taken all of those tools and put it into a process where not only can council get the strategic plan that they want and have themselves and the public engaged, they'll also be able to measure, are we accomplishing that goal through these tools that we have? And so Open Gov is now incorporated into your strategic planning process, which is something I don't know if other cities have done.
All right. Ms. Willis, Gilja, go.
I guess my question is, you have just gone through one, two, three, four, five, five different initiatives. Are these different platforms that are going to be used? You have Intercom, Open Gov, I know Open Gov is ClearPoint Strategy, Esri, and C Click Fix. So...
So they're all one, they're all different platforms that get you to the same thing. So Open Gov is its own platform, but all Open Gov does, as you know, is basically give you outputs. So how much money have you spent, who got the check, et cetera, et cetera. But then you have C Click Fix, that is your app that helps to measure some of your outputs. So just being transparent, we've got complaints that folks say, man, I leave a message on the tell line and nobody calls me back. Or if they do, I don't know when they documented and when it was fixed. C Click Fix allows them to take control of it and plug it in themselves, and now it's like an accountability tool. If I'm Jason and you called on the tell line and I'm supposed to go out to this house and make something happen, well, now the app tells Jason as well as Ms. Johnson that this is supposed to happen and within that timeframe. Esri, I want you to think of as your GIS mapping system. So you're, I think you all know what GIS is, it's just the actual title is Esri. And so Esri allows you to pull all of that economic development information, mapping, et cetera, et cetera. So in the absence of Google giving us our boundary like we need, Esri is doing the heat mapping for us. So it ties together. Intercom is not a platform, it is a group who actually does strategic plans on behalf of government who is responsible for helping us tie all of these together. And so they're all different pieces to one goal.
I understand, but what the mayor is saying, and I think for more clarification, well, I have two questions. One, the mayor's call line, so I guess I'm not understanding, is the mayor's call line supposed to be a call line to address all issues that C Click Fix?
It's your 3-1-1 call center. So what happens is, that's just, we just plugged that name in, we don't know what it's going to be called, but it's to make clear what we're doing there. So C Click Fix is just your app, but you actually can't really call it right now. You can call it and leave the information and it transforms it, but you actually have to have a call center. I think you guys, are you in Atlanta?
What can we call it? The city of South Fulton call out so people want to call it, they're calling the mayor, and the mayor is supposed to be calling it back?
Call it whatever you want. It's just a holy place, it's a 3-1-1 call center. And so it's the same thing, I mean, in the district, we just use the same information that we use up there. It's a 3-1-1 call line and we call it the mayor's call center there because everybody knows that they're calling the city. Even no matter which form of government you have, people believe if they're calling the mayor's call center, then it's going to City Hall. But you could just call it the 3-1-1 call center if you want to.
I just don't want any confusion about people saying, I called the mayor, but the mayor didn't call me back. And so...
I don't want that either.
Listen, what I don't want us to do is get bogged down on an inconsequential part of this presentation.
Well, my other question is, what the mayor was saying, that each of these initiatives have different timelines associated with them, and I agree with him, there needs to be some type of communication to council, not a press release, because a press release is for the public, internally for your elected body, there needs to be some type of correspondence to us to let us know when each timeline, when there has been progress made and when there's completion of everything that's on these timelines, whether it's the vendor or whether, I prefer, if we pay somebody to consult, I think they should have access to us.
So council member, if you look at ClearPoint Strategy right here, and I know Dr. Ralph is probably more familiar with it with some, I think she was working on it before I got here, but...
All of us were.
All right. So the ClearPoint Strategy, let me say it like this, I was able to work with Dr. Ralph to get some information on the ClearPoint vendor, which is on the GSA schedule, which means we don't have to procure it the same way. So it's not a battle or a competition between anybody, it's just a platform. And so this ClearPoint platform provides all of the information necessary to be able to track. So the whole purpose of having this particular platform is it serves as an automatic project manager. I'm sure many of you have utilized SharePoint and other quality software pieces, this is the same thing. Once you guys develop the performance platforms that you would like to see, you don't have to worry about staff, you don't have to worry about communication being an issue because it literally updates in real time. So what we have done is taken your feedback of wanting information instantly and provided it to you. And so I would 100% agree with you and our mayor and actually every member of council is that they want information at their fingertips, and this platform will allow us to do it in the strategic plan. And so I'm happy to deliver on something that the council has been unified about.
And just to clarify, you're right, there is no competition, but what I want you to understand is before you came, all of us participated in a demo, and so we are aware of ClearPoint Strategy. What we didn't know is that the city was moving forward on it until this presentation today.
Yeah, that would be, Ms. Gilja.
I'm happy to see that we're talking about the strategic plan again, but what I'm not happy about is that I feel like I'm in suspended air because the session, that the day and a half session that we had was excellent, particularly the last day, we were supposed to get reports, we were supposed to get information, we never got information, so it's just floundering in the atmosphere. And now we have a company, and it appears, you know, I sit and I read, the set initial strategic focus area, council and executive team complete. And that might be complete for somebody, but it's not complete for me because there was so much excellent work done that half the second day, but we never got anything about it or any return. And then the North Georgia training was not a second part of the strategic plan, it really wasn't, you know, it wasn't a continuation of what we left off on that second day. So I don't know what we're talking about other than the priority areas that we came up with, the council came up with in 2017, and then came up with the vision and the mission and the five priority areas that we came up with. And so they've not been strategized, not yet. So I don't know, all right, now I don't know what, so before you answer, let me get it all out. So that's one point. The second thing is that I think that along the way, the community needs to be included much sooner rather than when we get towards the end, because that's what the chart says, gather input from the community and then the final. And so I just think that they need to be in a little sooner. I would like to see the contract with Intercom. And then lastly, Open Gov, when I see what's the name of this, I'm not sure, you know, the mayor, city manager, but there's nothing about the council. So what I did was to look at council, look at websites in other cities, and when I look at those websites, what I see is things like council news, legislative initiatives, connect with council, rules of council, and we need some of that desperately because it's like, where are we and what are we doing? I think that's it.
Okay, so there was a lot there. I remember what you said about the last part of Open Gov, I just say, no, that I think we're using, we met internally and we're trying to model ours out to other cities. So I think we're on track there. The second thing that you, I was going backwards, you asked some things about where are we and it seemed like it's floundering. I tell you, council member, you had about a month, it's been about a month and two weeks, and so it takes some time for Carl Vincent to take that information and gather it, but after you come up with your five bucket, you know, you have to implement them, and you said that there's no strategy. We 100% agree with you. So Intercom is supposed to work with you to take those buckets and create the strategies to implement. So I think we're on the same page, and I think what we're saying is the vendor is going to help us coordinate that. They continue the work of Carl Vincent. So I think we're 100% in agreement, but that's what this process is supposed to do. So you got with Carl Vincent, you spent a day and a half, y'all came up with those big areas, what are we looking at? I mean, you follow what I'm going there. So for us, they work with staff and council. Council develops the big picture, but also helps to develop those strategies for implementation. The staff carries it out. And so now that you've had that first part, that's the second piece, is actually implementation. So that's what we're talking about right here. So if you look, you've got your five big buckets, it's on that little screen that's in front of you now, Ms. Winfield pulled it back up. So you've got the five big buckets as well as those subparts that you saw as really, really important. And so those areas are what came out of your strategic planning. And so now you have to look at it and say, all right, revenues and resources are a big thing for us, but also how do we flesh out our infrastructure and finance? And so that's what this vendor is going to work with you guys and see exactly what you're defining those things need to be. For just that instance, for this example, he has already met with the CFO and his staff and looked at what tools for infrastructure financing, bond financing, or key areas and issues that we may not have come up with while we were in the strategic planning session, and then he'll work with you guys to flesh it out more. And so that's why the next step is to take the feedback from staff, from your big buckets, and then implement your strategy and carry out the actual strategic plan. And so that is, that is where we are. We just haven't, you got to procure somebody, then they have to get on board, they can't come on board without starting, you know, with staff and council. And so that's where we're at. Once we finish that, we hit the ground running and the training wheels are off, you got to implement the plan that you come up with. And so the next step is for the vendor to help us through that process. So that was for your first, I think I answered your first and third, and I apologize, I missed the second. Oh, yes, and so as a part of this, you want community input. So this, that slide, can you go back to that slide? So that's just, the vendor hasn't met with you guys yet. So he, this is just the process that he has put in place, not this one, we'll go to the one I think she was talking about at the end, it's the visual, that one. So these are all of the parts, right? And this is the way they've probably done it in East Point and all these other places they work. Different city, different times, you'll get a chance to give, the reason they're meeting with you... Different city, different times, you'll get a chance to give, the reason they're meeting with you before they do anything is because if as a whole, you guys say, you know what, we got these five big buckets and we're happy with that, but before we do anything, we want our people to hear about it. If that's the will of the council, they'll change it. This is just, this is how they plan to move forward. But as a body, you guys are going to give guidance on what you want. And if you, if you don't think that, if they don't make a compelling enough argument to have community input towards the end, once you've fleshed it out, and you want something different, then they'll do what, you know, you ask them to do.
I have a question. So have, have the administrators met with them yet?
Yes, ma'am. Those dates that you have, that was their, that was their first time, uh, receiving the information about what you did up in Athens, yes, ma'am.
And so they are supposed to meet with council, um, in late October, and when is that?
So this meeting was supposed, this presentation to you, we had actually, remember, thought to do it last week, but we didn't have enough time, so we pushed it to this meeting. And so following this, Mr. Stark, we didn't wanna, just some person reaching out to council to set up meetings on strategic planning without staff bringing it to you. So beginning tomorrow, he was actually at the office today, helping us go over some of this stuff. He'll be reaching out to each one of your offices through your legislative aides beginning tomorrow.
Council, we have a couple of presentations under the, Ms. Guns, Ms. Brown, and Ms. Jackson.
So, um, I guess, um, interesting, we are in, what is the overall cost for all of these platforms that we are about to use? And I know that we had Open Gov last year, and that was taken out of the twenty eighteen budget, but we never really launched it. So what is the projected cost for all of this? I don't have that.
I've got some of that. So I know that for most of them, they were small batch purchases. So I think that Intercom, it was definitely under the twenty-five thousand, but I think it was closer to like sixteen thousand. Uh, Esri is your GIS, so I think we had that budgeted at a hundred thousand, that was also eighteen. So most of these were eighteen, the C Click Fix platform was less than fifteen thousand dollars. Actually, Clearpoint was also, because it was on that GSA schedule, I think it was, um, under fifteen thousand as well. I, I do not know the cost of Open Gov, I mean, I think you know that predates me. But, uh, removing Esri and Open Gov, I think together those are less than thirty-five thousand dollars, or right about. Esri, I believe we had the GIS system at about a hundred thousand. Remember, we did a amendment for the, for that system. And so we can get you those numbers following. And I don't know where Open Gov was, but I can tell you, Clearpoint, I worked on that one, so I believe it was right at about fifteen thousand. C Click Fix, I know was at, uh, fourteen thousand, and again, it's paid for through this year as well, along with Clearpoint. So there's no FY nineteen cost. Um, I don't believe there's an FY nineteen cost outside of maintenance for Open Gov, and it would be the same thing with Esri. You know, that's the GIS, you pay for that on, on a regular basis. And Intercom is a one-time thing.
So like for instance, Open Gov, is that not renewable, uh, every year? So it would probably be time to renew Open Gov.
So I believe we renewed it in eighteen, though, did, did you not renew?
As long as we use it, we'll be paying, we'll be paying it a month, a year.
No, I think she's asking when to renew it. Did, did we renew it in eighteen?
We did.
Yeah, so it was renewed in eighteen.
Okay, but you started, you paid for it in eighteen, so I don't have to renew it in eighteen.
We were supposed to implement last year, twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen. So you purchased in seventeen and you renewed at the end of eighteen.
Okay.
Is that, does she?
So yes, I would like to see that, I think that, um, would be interesting to look at. And is no way that we could even kind of streamline, is no system that talks to one another to make it easier?
Well, so I think we did that here. So the main platform that you're using for some of this stuff is Open Gov and C Click Fix. But the website is our streamlined tool. So just like other cities, you have a bunch of different things that plug in. So your Open Gov will actually be hosted on our site, or you'll be able to access it on our site. I think some of those things, again, we were waiting to speak to council, so we didn't actually let the public know that some of those things are on the website. I don't think we've, I guess the best way to say it is unhidden them yet, where they can access them. But, uh, for Open Gov, I know that Open Records is connected to the Open Gov site, and I believe economic development as well. Those other data points, you'll see, you know, the November fifth stuff, it'll be next, including finance. The C Click Fix, that's your separate app, but it also can be accessed through the website. So this new improved website and those improvements that we reported on a few months ago is so that all of these different tools can be implemented in one place. So for the public and for council, you'll go to the website and you won't know all of this is happening in the background. It'll just be your website, and these tools are your plugins.
Okay, 'cause that's, that's just, you know, I just don't, I don't want it to be cumbersome for residents to run into the system and then get lost in the process. Um, I'm a big fan of transparency, and I think that we're on the right path, um, but I just don't want people getting lost in the sauce.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Uh, councilwoman, Row.
Working today. Um, one of the things I think is, uh, really important is that this moves us in the right direction. Are these working?
Yes.
Uh, moves us in the right direction in terms of being able to measure where we are. I know a lot of times, we've said in the past and talking with colleagues, we may adopt something, we may pass an ordinance, but the implementation side. So hopefully, this is gonna identify those particular, particular strategy, that the staff will be implementing to get us to that point. And secondly, I had a question for Ms., um, Winfield, as it relates to, I know you indicated that we're working with the county to get info, to feed in the ESRI. Are we working with the utility providers, um, to find out like, you know, where fiber is in our city? Are we working with the City of Atlanta to find out where our fire hydrants? What about those external partners? How are we making sure that's gonna be fed into our system?
We will work with them if necessary, but it's our understanding that the county already has all of that information since they're providing those public works services on behalf of the city. Um, but they have provided quite a bit of information that we think is gonna be all inclusive, but if not, we'll definitely make sure that we, actually, we're in the process of working on a data sharing agreement with Atlanta. So in any event, if that information is not included, then we'll definitely reach out to those other areas.
One caveat to that, though, is with AT&T, the, uh, pilots or whatever they are for, for their new, uh, and, and maybe it is the fiber, I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, but, uh, we are working with them separately to get some information that neither the county or us would have, because it's their new technology.
Yeah, I, I think we should double check, just based on our experience in this transition, um, making sure that the county has the most accurate.
Information.
Information, um, I think is gonna be very important. And also, um, even with our schools, again, making sure whether it's dealing with antennas that may be on their buildings, any telecom.
Okay.
I, I just want us to make sure we haven't just left that with rest on what we get from Fulton County.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kamey. Thank you so much for this presentation, uh, Ms. Winfield, uh, Mr. John, this is excellent. I just had a question about our IVR. Can we get an option for council so when people call that number, they can reach their council people?
Yeah, I think, um, I believe somebody asked for that, I'm pretty sure you asked for that. And so I, I know that, uh, Mr. Strickland was working on that, so that's a commitment that we made to do. I think the first thing, and we discussed it with council, is that, uh, having each director have their name on it. And, I mean, there were a couple of things that came through. So I know that, uh, each department and all of that stuff has their specific answering, answering line. And then we've actually started to create the new lines for public works and new departments and things of that nature. So the council one, we've heard you, and yes, we will definitely have that. I do think that it is done, and what we may have done, I'll just take the bullet for that one, is that we may not have communicated it forward yet. So just let me check on that, and at a minimum, we'll get you an email, uh, about it in the morning with the status. Yes, sir.
Okay, lastly.
Um, thank you. What I wanna know, and I came in, and so you might have already discussed it, um, based on the Carl Vincent, you're talking about when we went to Athens, right? Um, in the five buckets, where does the public safety and emergency register?
That will be the quality service of every, uh, member serving correctly.
Okay.
And by the way, they are finalizing their report, they gave Intercom the draft. And so probably a week or so after you meet with him, they will forward the, uh, the final version, um, to us, which you can, you know, we can distribute, we'll talk to you guys about what you wanna do with it. But you'll be able to post it, show the different phases of the, uh, strategic planning and all of that stuff.
Thank you so much. Mr. Manager, we have our back four more presentations. Next.
The next one was a proposed legislative review process presented by Renato Pascal, records administrator.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council staff. Um, again, Renato Pascal, city's deputy administrator. So stand, stand before you today to present a proposed, um, improvements to our legislative process. Um, you know, there's been some talk on how we can improve that process to increase efficiency and transparency of, um, legislative matters that take place within the city. So on this first page, um, as you can see, there are a few issues and goals that we would like to address. So as I previously reported, um, we'd like to provide transparency and accountability and improve productivity. So one of the ways we wanna do that is, you see on this next slide, this is kind of a brief snapshot of the entire process. Um, when, uh, incorporate a sole or single point of contact, which will be the city's deputy administrator, where all legislation will be submitted, um, to the end, and it will, um, at that time, the process will start. So we'll go to the next place and explain some more. Um, so at the beginning of that process, it'll be received by the administrator, um, where he would then, he or she would then, um, submit that information to all department heads, legal, and also finance, um, to prepare fits for that legislation. And if you see it in red, um, we want to make sure that we adhere to, uh, comment period. So by including that with all departments, legal and, uh, finance, we'll be able to accommodate that seven to fourteen day time period. Um, upon completion of that, um, any comments, concerns, or reviews will be returned to the deputy administrator to give updates to council members, um, in the event that there are any changes or, um, additional information that needs to be added to that legislation. If all is okay with that, we'll move forward with submitting that information to the city manager's office, um, and the mayor for preparation of an agenda for the, uh, subject of, uh, council meeting. Okay, so this is just a completed, um, review of the prior page. So again, there'll be a review process, um, the agenda will be prepared, um, also. So once that is done, it'll be submitted to the city clerk, um, to prepare, uh, final agenda prior to, um, the council meeting. One item I wanna note that we would like to add is, and this will kind of go on to the transparency and communications piece. Um, so we wanted to be able to provide insight to our citizens, to let them know any happenings that are going on should they not be able to turn in online or come to your council meeting. So we wanna utilize our social media platforms to provide any, uh, updates on any legislation or matters that were adopted or approved, uh, during the council, during the council meeting. So lastly, I wanna talk about this, I'm excited about this piece right here, is SharePoint. So what we would like to do, and I'd be remiss if I did not, um, acknowledge our councilman, Lee, for his input on providing some information with the legislative tracker. Um, we all should have received a hard copy of that. Um, and that, what that document does at the beginning of the process, we documented any and all legislation that comes through, um, through the deputy administrator. Um, we documented that from beginning to end of the process. Um, so what we're gonna do is, what we would like to do is pair that with SharePoint, and so what that does is provide a working document that will not only track, um, any changes, but it also serve as a centralized repository for some of our legislative matters, any changes and documents that may take place along the way. And then also, down the road, if we need to come back to that, we'll also have that point. So we would kind of build and move forward, um, using SharePoint. I think it'll be a great transparency piece, um, for our council and also department heads to see what's going on, and also add comments in the live document. So it's kind of a collaborative workspace, if you will. And that, I will close out, and if you have any questions, I'll be pleased.
Yeah, thank you so much, yeah, Lee, Ms. Gilley, Ms. Willis, Ms. Brown, Ms. Guns.
Oh, it's, yeah, thank you for giving us two, um, though, my first question is about the legislative process tracker. Uh, it's really worth a comment. I would like for that to be visible, not just to council, but to everyone in the city. Um, so that everyone in the city can see what we're working on. And then secondly, um, there is a portion of this process, some, somewhere in this document, it says that we will not go forward with any legislation that doesn't have a fit.
I think that's in, within the fourteen days.
Within the fourteen.
Yeah, until you, because you, you want them to have, that, did we interpret that right, from the legislation? That they should have the fourteen days for the council member to work with everybody to get what they need? Is that not what?
Yeah, no, that's correct, I just wanna make sure that after that fourteen days, once it is not.
Wait, can I ask a council member a quick question about the public piece that he asked? Mayor, would you mind? So I think where we were thinking, um, and just looking at other places, usually when council wants public input, you know, we do have the ability to like hold public hearings and things of that nature. We were thinking that council could leverage this process, and we could make it open, we gotta figure out how to do that on SharePoint to make it an open document. I know there's a way to do it, but not sure how to protect your workspace. That's, that would concern me a little bit. But I think if you didn't wanna do a public hearing, that at a certain point, you could make the document public, and we could do it on maybe the website or an external place. But I would just at first thought have some concerns about your comments and tweaks being public throughout the process. I think usually, through the legislative process, at certain points of development, you make it public. And the, the most efficient thing that I've seen is that you hold a public hearing to get live input from people. And we could probably, with our new technology, maybe make it public and allow people to comment if they can't come to a hearing.
So I wasn't thinking necessarily about our, our personal comments or, uh, public hearings. I was just thinking, so for example, with the Georgia General Assembly, any particular bill, I can pull that bill, I can see its pass, its encumbered. So just that basic information, and you also can see which bills we're working on, what issues we're tackling.
I'm sure we could figure out a way to do that. I'm sure we can figure out.
Ms. Gilley.
Thank you so very much for your presentation. I do have a comment, though. Most of us, I think, I'm not sure, but I'm saying I think, uh, we will prepare, um, the legislation and we'll send it to the, uh, to the attorney, so the attorney can have input and put the, the legal lease in there to make sure that we're dotting all our i's and crossing all our t's. So the only thing that I think that we need to do, when we send it to Mr. Renato, who's going to be the tracker, and you know, the person that's gonna take care of all of this, I think we need to send it to the attorney at the same time, it's being tracked. That way she has it, and that, and you know, then there can be that feedback or whatever, because she really might say, for instance, let's say, well, that's already been done, or that I don't think that's something we need to do. Uh, and so he would be all the way down the road to getting it to the department heads and finance, you know, before, and maybe not need to. So I think that it needs to be that dual track, it's being tracked, and that's one of our concerns. So they know it's being tracked. So they know it's being tracked, it's going there, and we're having this, you know, contact with, with her.
So I don't think, this is proposed. I think we can definitely incorporate that. And I'm, I'm, uh, making sure that our team in the back is capturing these updated requests. But I think where, what I'm hearing from you two, just to make sure we, we got it. One, we want to figure out how to model the General Assembly's process and make it a visible thing of all submitted legislation. And then the second piece, instead of having, you have a single point of contract, contact for tracking, but that person, and council is gonna do this, is gonna make sure that when they submit it to the attorney they just submitted to Mr. Pascal.
Exactly.
And he's responsible for everybody else getting it. She's responsible for maybe reaching out to him and saying, "Legal, move forward through the process." And good, we got it.
That was gonna be my suggestion, is that, that legal, instead of becoming as a finance, we would have talked to Workers Administrator and Workers Administrator will be a copy to whatever we're sending to legal. And then, um, will the Workers Administrator be responsible for, uh, setting up meetings with department heads? If the legislation, because most of the legislation, um, that we work on requires us to include staff input. Um, so, uh.
If, so it's, it's really, if that's what you would like, I think this process is the first thing is as soon as you submit it, he's responsible for getting staff input and comments. And so when they return them, sometimes, I, I think we've had some experience in both ways. Sometimes it's, oh yeah, I like that. We're gonna incorporate that. And then sometimes it's, let's have a sit down and, and flesh this out. So at that point that he gives the comments, I think the council member will say, "I don't understand this. I want more information," or, "I like it. Can we sit with somebody?" That, you would be able to do it and he would navigate that process. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I think so, because I think to have him as a liaison for seven different people, um, on the, the, the number of legislation that's flying through this, uh, city with us being, it's going to ease one person.
So don't, you said, don't make it him. Who?
No, I don't think, I think that if we are going to need a sit down conversation, I don't know if just him being that person.
No, 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 no. We're saying, he's just, this is the person coordinating.
So he's just a tracker?
Definitely. So if you, example, you have, uh, a legislation coming up, bicycle legislation, and you send it and it goes, and your new process, it goes to him and the lawyer. Now, when they, he's sending it to every other department head. They give you comments back. They're giving him the comments. He's making sure they're documenting it in SharePoint. You get the comments. You get them and you say, "I've got six comments. All five of these, easy. We moving on with it." But this comment, I don't understand how this applies to bite legislation or whatnot. I need to sit with Chief Meadows. And so you just respond that. You probably could do that in SharePoint. But he would make sure that your meeting, that you want, happens with your legislation so that everybody's sticking to the timeframe and the process.
Okay. And, um, will this process be retroactive or going forward?
I, I would hope going forward.
Okay. The, the reason I'm asking is because we have a lot of legislation that's in process that's not necessarily complete. And so I would love to see anything that's in process incorporated into this particular process to help give a check and balance. Because what I've constantly been asking and I haven't received it yet is for a, um, some type of, uh, uh, list of what's in process and who the sponsor is and when the anticipated date that we're gonna get it. And I was told I would get it twenty, forty-eight hours of the last council meeting and I still haven't received it. So that's why I'm asking.
So that, so that is a little outside of my lane. I, I will not speak for anybody or, or comment to, to that. What I will say is, is that the SharePoint, we're going to make the adjustments. This is just our presentation. It appears that for the most part, council likes it. And so we will implement this and we got to go back to the office and get with, you know, our staff and make sure we put it in the SharePoint and have it active. We're also gonna have to train you. Uh, I don't know if everybody knows how to use SharePoint. I'm not an expert.
You will require a training?
Yeah, so we're gonna train you on it and walk you through the process. But it, it's hard to comment on, on that because you got so many different pieces of legislation. Can we put it all in SharePoint and be available, kind of like the General Assembly piece that Councilman Colley said? Absolutely. To go back retroactively to see how long it took, can I, I don't know if we can do that.
No, what I'm saying, just to clarify, just the ones that's in process, that has not made it, that's been cued, we haven't made it through the legislative process, they haven't made it to the agenda, it's just in process.
And so would you like that to start basically as new legisla-, because you got a clock from new legislation at seven to ten?
Yeah, we'll take it.
All right, just do it up. Okay, uh, Ms. Wild and Will Cogan, Ms. Gottes.
Quick comment. Um, the way our current visio, this visio flow chart, I think, um, after you come off the box for the budget manager, and you come down into review by the city attorney, you have to also have another review, not by the records manager, but a re-review by the attorney. Because now they've all given their com- comments, the attorney needs to clean it up. So that box really shouldn't be under Records Administration, uh, Administrator, should be under City Attorney line.
Okay.
To incorporate the edits. And then it should come down to the budget manager to do the fiscal impact on the cleaned up version. Cause it probably looks very different than when it first went through the process. So trust me, I love this kind of stuff. So I know if we think about this, and then it can come back and kind of flow the rest of the way. But you gotta have another review by the attorneys in there.
So I think what we can do, Mayor, simply, so though we've got all your comments and it looks, I hope I'm reading you guys right, that you do like this process and with your edits, this is what you want to do. And so what we can do is simply take it, put it into a memo, and then say, "Hey, based on what you agreed upon, here's our new process." And hopefully you guys give us a little bit of time for them to update the SharePoint and say, "Look, this is our effective date and training will happen then." That's, that will be our process. If y'all okay with that.
One follow up question. Relative to, if you could share a little bit about that public review process, that public hearing? Cause I know in the past, when legislation is on the agenda, usually during a public comment, that's when the public speaks to what's ever on the agenda. And so I just want to understand what this looks like, cause this could get lengthy and scheduling. I'm trying to understand, like, how it would operationalize.
So I, I think if we did it via technology, and I, I didn't, I can picture it now that, that he's mentioned it, but what Mr. Colley was saying about putting all of the, uh, legislation online. I think if we do that, we can also, the same people who would check that or whatnot could see new legislation pending. And it'd be pending legislation there and they can follow it and give them the ability to make comments. But separately, what we've always done in, or my experience seeing it in other places is that a council member can call a public hearing to discuss legislation and receive public comment specifically on that. Yes, it's not a requirement.
I, I think that makes sense, because I, I think it's a really slow up the process. I definitely support public input and I'd like if we figure out how to do it with a smart solution so that they can run in electronically and we get that feedback before we make a final decision. But I just, you know, as it stands now, it takes at least a month to pass anything.
Understood.
Yeah, so, yeah, if that would just say, uh, optional for the public hearing. But if you would look to a smart solution to see if we can get feedback from the public, I, I'd welcome that.
And y'all are fine with that solution, the General Assembly solution, everybody's okay with that, right? Where we just, we place it online, all of the, the, the legislation. But if there's new legislation that you want comments on, we will put it up there and basically have a box where people can place comments.
I think, I think that's fine. Right now you can pull any ordinance before we vote on it anyway. You can see it online right now. So it's, it's just allowing them to comment, so.
All right, Ms. Gottes, we're gonna close this out. Ms. Gottes.
I just have, um, I guess, capacity. You're a Records Administrator, so you handle a lot of the open record requests. Could be handling, coordinating our legislation. And then you also handle coordinating constituent affairs for some, for everything. So I'm just concerned how this is going to help us keep moving our legislative board. I mean, as good as far as tracking, but I just feel like it's possibly may get lost again in the process because this young man right here is the only one person, but he's gonna be coordinating a lot of things. And I just think that, I don't know if it needs to be another person to help you or what, but it just, and we have a lot of stuff in the pipeline. So I just, I ha- I can't see the vision yet, because I just know that this young man is overwhelmed. And I hear a lot of the staff saying that they're overwhelmed as well, so.
I would say primary point of contact for most things, uh, council related, but he would not be the only person working on these activities. We got a new city. We're all overwhelmed. But it's our responsibility to deliver and I would say if you would trust us with this responsibility, I'll be the person accountable and we'll make sure it happens. And when you're not satisfied, I'm certain that you will let me know and we'll make whatever adjustments are necessary.
Okay, um, also too, you're gonna be the owner of the SharePoint site. So you're not, you're gonna be the one uploading the revised document. It's not gonna be a document where all eight of us can go in and comment, right? You're gonna be able to control the process, cause I've been on some SharePoint sites and there's been many people that have been able to go in and manipulate the document and.
Could we, could we hold that for training? Could we actually, our program that performs manager and IT folks are actually going to put, they're putting together a SharePoint site. And so it'd probably be unfair for us to talk about the process and even how the collaborative workspace would work without having them a part of the conversation. Because just like in a Google Doc where you can turn certain things off and turn certain things on, we expect to have that type of capability. But for us to, and, and just to be honest, Ms. Chris is gonna help work on this. The programs and performance administrator, it's gonna be a few people that touch it. This is the responsible party that, we're trying to make customer service better with council. So you know, you call him. And then, once he gets off the phone with you, he may pick up, "Look, Mr. Donald, I need some help with this." Or, "Ms. Chris, can you plug this in?" But for you, he's the primary point of contact and the sausage making will kind of figure out with those technology subject matter experts.
Okay.
All right, uh, one last question. Would this be an action item?
So I don't think it, well, if you guys think it requires an action item, I think we've taken your guidance and now we've got to put it together.
So are we determining that this is an action item, Mr. Baker?
I think we're all clear about it now. We made our edits. Yeah, so I think we're clear.
And so it suffices for us to just follow up with the memo, let's say, within a week's time, detailing the new process so you can see those updates? And then maybe we put a tentative date out for the training for SharePoint? Is that, is that an appropriate action for council?
I think that would be good.
It's, it's you. Mr. Baker?
I froze the comments, uh.
We haven't made a decision on how we need to move. If there's opposition, how do we determine?
Okay, let's do, let's do this then. I guess the vote would be for you to bring it back as an action item. Somebody gonna make a motion. I'll take that.
How do I make that motion to bring this back as an action item?
Probably move the second on the discussion.
Yes, why are we bringing it back as an action item?
I wanted to bring, you wanted your suggestion? Speaker's manager.
Yeah, I don't, I've, yes, I'm not certain, so I.
I was asking for your clarity as to whether.
Oh, so if we bring it back as an action item, I'm assuming that we would present the updates, the training date, and confirm that this is the direction that council wants?
Yeah, cause I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm confused. What is the action we are deciding? If, if the action is we approve this process, then we can take a vote to approve the process. But if the action item is we're gonna go forward or not, like, like what? If we're post, what, if we're postponing to the next meeting, does that mean that his work stops until the next meeting? I'm just, what are we, what are we deciding about?
The reason why I made the comment, Mr. Colley, was remember the change that we were making? For that if you wanted them to come back as an action item for clarity and would vote on it. And I think that's, that's the, that's why Mr. Baker gave his, uh, made his motion. It can go either way from that. I just asked the question.
So I, I guess I'll direct it to Mr. Baker. What, what is the action that you're, you're asking? What are we going to vote on?
Well, to be clear, um, Mr. Renaldo Pascal gave us a presentation. Everybody gave how they feel about the process. I have some pushback, uh, that I would have to get some clarity on. And that clarity, uh, I don't, I don't see our normal working city attorney present today. And I don't know personally how I feel about the full process of me not being able to directly speak or communicate with our city attorney before I start a legislative process.
No, 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 there's nothing stopping.
I mean, I mean, as far as when, when I'm submitting, whatever he, I need to give it to him and her according to this process. And what I'm saying is, there's, I mean, if you want me to put it out like that, I just really feel like it's an opportunity to politicize, uh, legislation that may just be in the process before it even comes forward. And that's just how I feel personally about that step of this process. So, uh, I mean, before it even comes forward, you know, you got a lot of way in on several different angles, uh, or pushback that may come before it even comes before mayor and council. So I just contend a different way. If we voting on it, we have our opportunity to vote and then at least I, it'll be on record that I'm opposed to the process.
Would you mind, may I make one quick comment, sir?
Sure.
I, I think one, one way that this might help to de-politicize the legislation is that if we do it the General Assembly way, adding that piece in and knowing that you have seven to fourteen days, if I'm quoting it correctly, to put it out, that means that there is nothing, and this process, each council member knows where it's at, you automatically get your stuff on the agenda within a reasonable amount of time without any pushback. It's, so I, I think you can look at it both ways, but I, respectfully, I do think that it, it may be a good idea for us to flesh it out some more, let people talk, you know, amongst themselves. Our city attorney isn't here and then we just bring it back and vote on it. But I, I think that General Assembly piece helps to make it more, uh, you know, visible, so I, I.
You, you made them write, Mr. Speaker.
No, I didn't agree with you.
However, I just, I'm just not comfortable with just saying, okay, this is what is accepted process.
Well, I, that's what I'm saying. I'm in agreement with you. I think bringing it back would be helpful.
Is there a further discussion? I'm sorry, I, I, cause I, I just, I just still have a floor. I don't, so I don't think that, this is a process about how you all process information. This is not a process about how things come to the agenda. Regardless, regardless of however you all track this, at the end of the day, nothing goes on the agenda until the mayor says it goes on the agenda. So we're not changing that process, right? Like, that's not changing. We're not, we're not, we wrote a, we wrote a thing, we wrote a resolution that said that things don't need a fit. So we're not actually, we're not requiring any more or any less of council. We're not changing any of the rules of legislation. This is just about how you all are gonna track all the stuff that we send.
And you'll know when it, but you'll know when it's done. So I think that, I think that kind of de-politicizes things to where, you know, it's like, hey, is my stuff done? Why isn't it going on, et cetera, et cetera? Now, that veil would be lifted. It's just all visible.
And it's because of these, and, and I say that, because at the end of the day, if Mr. Pascal, if we submit something to Mr. Pascal and fourteen days pass and he hasn't forwarded it on to anybody, it can still go on the agenda.
That's right. Yes, sir.
You know, so it doesn't, this is just about how you all process the work. This, nothing in this stops us from moving forward with any legislation the way that we always have.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Ms. Willis?
And I would have to agree and I welcome this process, because oftentimes, um, I think this is what, for us as policymakers, we ask, we, we, we double, we create work, um, that sometimes we are working on legislation that we don't know each other is working on. And so with the tracking process, we can look to see if a policy is working on. If someone is working on a policy and we will know to go and talk to that person or if a policy isn't being worked on, then.
or if a policy isn't being worked on, then we can, you know, work with a policy ourselves. So this is something that I welcome. I've been asking for, for a very long time. And it gets a check and balance for our attorney because if she has something on her list that's not in the tracking system, then it's a check and balance for the attorney, the legal process and our internal operations process. So I welcome this. This is much needed and I'm not understanding what the legislative, what the action item is even.
Well, I, I think one, one caveat might be though, what if, if, if that is a concern, I think everybody's concerns are valid. What if, uh, we had initiator actually be the city attorney? So that everybody sends it to the city attorney. It starts with her so you can have whatever communication is necessary and then when it goes to Mr. Pascal is when it goes into the system.
Mr. Baker, Mr. Baker, we have a motion on for, uh, can you raise the discussion? All, all those favor?
What's the motion?
Uh, repeat the motion, Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker? Okay, so motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Baker, seconded by Councilmember Jackson to bring this item back as an action item. All those in favor? All who vote?
Actually, people who don't raise their hands are affirming the votes.
That's what's supposed to be. Right, and you know, anybody who doesn't oppose basically is in support of the motion.
But are we supposed to ask, uh, state why we're staying if you're not voting?
Yes. No, we don't, we don't, Robert's moves as a matter of obligation.
Can we ask who's the party?
You want to check in for me?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Why are you sitting there? That's, that's the Serena though. She's sitting in for our city attorney now.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
He wants to know, uh, if one does not vote, is that, is that affirmative?
Is that an affirmative vote? That's correct. Do they have to state?
They have to state why they're, they're, they're standing.
I don't know that they have to state the reason.
Okay. All right, stand hands.
Bring it back as opposed.
Thank you, thank you. Two people out, two people disagreeing as an affirmative vote, so it does not pay.
No, it pays.
So it does pay.
It pays.
It's going to come back in the next meeting as naturally.
You have, I'm assuming there are three, uh, no votes. That's Brown, Willis and Colley, so there were four days, three days. Um, thank you.
Go bring your things there.
Thank you. Mr. Baker? The next item is a public work service model presentation that's being developed by the city manager, Mr. Oldy. Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. Alrighty, so, uh, excited to talk to you a little bit about one of the action items that is coming up on our agenda today, uh, focusing on our public work service model. And so, uh, I guess I'll go into a variety of things, but one of the things that I wanted to, uh, highlight is that, you know, this is, this is a very difficult, uh, decision, uh, and a recommendation by staff, uh, because the service model is a little different than what we have done in the past. And, uh, I think it has a lot more to do with cost and differences in transition than anything else. I think we have been, uh, extremely excited about the enthusiasm of our transportation workforce. We had a chance to meet with some of those folks, uh, last week, uh, I believe the days are kind of just going all over, but I mean, they were really excited about, uh, getting some clear answers which they had not gotten before. Uh, and knowing, you know, not only why the city is making some decisions, but also our commitment to make sure that we support them through this transition and make sure they have everything they need. And so to that end, not only will we be presenting this today and talking to your body during the regular meeting, we'll also be meeting with them again because one of the key things that we committed to and that they expressed is that they just want open line of communication, know what's going on and hear it from the horse's mouth instead of even some of their partners at Fulton County speaking for us. And so I think we had a real productive meeting where people were able to ask some strong questions and they had some pointed questions and, you know, made sure we knew how they felt, but they also, you know, gave some support to the city. So that was very encouraging and we look forward to seeing them again, uh, uh, tomorrow. And, and expect probably maybe even to have some, uh, members of the staff here tonight to, you know, uh, talk about uh, what, what we talked about and even their thoughts, uh, so far, or even maybe to hear, uh, our presentations. So, so excited about that. Uh, the key thing that we just want to highlight, and I'll go through this quickly so that you guys have as much time to ask questions as you would like. There are a couple of areas I am going to dive deeper into though. So one, this model combines field service and citizen engagement and predictive maintenance. We have not done that, um, previously. And so we will be engaging that quote unquote, uh, mayor's call center, but it's just a three one one platform will also focus to support, uh, public work. And so we, we will have, uh, and we have some of the members of Jacob's team here as well to talk about that, but we will be building out that call center. So that is included in this process, which is something that we haven't had before. Also making sure that we continue to yield responsive services to citizens and, uh, citizens and it employs a hybrid model that uses the contract services and city personnel. And so under this model, um, while the bulk is his contract, uh, the city, the assistant city manager, uh, for now serves as the uh, contract manager per se, uh, in this model, making sure that the different functions of, uh, public work for both general services, which we will mainly do in-house, and the transportation portion, uh, is coordinated with one point of contact. Again, you have the city staff and the contract personnel piece and the service responsibilities. And the council wanted to, although they're in the contract and you've received that, we fleshed it out because I know you had wanted to see what the performance measures look like. And as you'll see, they're very different, um, or slightly different than what we've, uh, had previously. And so when we look at ground maintenance, um, the contract is four week service cycle versus six to eight weeks, which means that will happen more often. Um, it also includes repair and preventative maintenance of interior and exterior city facilities, uh, and room setup, mail service, things of that nature. We think that's very important. And so I was, I was pleased, but I, I was pleased because we know that it's in the contract, but it was something that was brought to my attention. I remember one of the staff members mentioned that their facilities, um, they wanted some more investment in the, uh, transportation facilities. And so as you'll see through our contract activities, that is one of our goals as well to make sure that the facilities are up to speed and that they're operating on the equipment in the facility that allow them to, to do their job to test. Fleet maintenance, which is something again, uh, remains internal, that, uh, process. And we mentioned it and I was high level remind you, we have brought over services. We do not bring over the dream quote unquote, uh, team that is at the, the county. That is not, they still provide that service, so we don't have that infrastructure. So we have leveraged internal staff to be able to now have that capability. Uh, in addition, uh, the street signs and lighting, including the installation and maintenance of signs and lights on public streets and roads is now, uh, under the city's control. Another, uh, activity that you will see that will be coordinated by the right of way, uh, uh, maintenance staff through the contract is the four week cycle versus the six to eight week cycle as well. Uh, roadworks and side work, sidewalk maintenance is currently performed by the county and while they contract some of those services out, is also done, uh, by staff. So they kind of have a hybrid model there. We would actually be leveraging, uh, contract staff to coordinate that full process. The next piece, uh, with solid waste coordination, so you know through our, through the ordinance that you just passed, we would oversee the residential trash collection and recycling program, uh, uh, through regulating that. Um, the traffic signal and sign operations in the streets is something that will also be, uh, coordinated contractually. Uh, I will say that we got a little bit of a surprise because we had made the assumption that all of those activities would come with us, but because of the Fulton industrial corridor still staying in place, it would not. And so the county, uh, plans to keep those services in-house and provide us access. And so as you know, that, uh, is one of those additional costs that we did not expect. Uh, we will also again be providing that twenty-four hour call center through the contract and also stormwater management and all of the certifications, credentials and responses that are required would also be done in that manner. Uh, I think one of the things that I wanted to highlight to you is not only the differences in the cost that you see quickly, um, based off what was budgeted and what we're proposing because while they don't look as different, I'm going to also show you some of the unexpected costs that have come that really drive it home to not only council and the public in the key differences of the cost between services. So I think the first thing you'll see is the, the personnel costs under the contract model are spread across the entire contract versus, uh, bringing them on. But also the operating costs, uh, are higher for in-house, uh, service delivery. Uh, the facility costs are one that would also be included, uh, and are not, uh, actually in the contract. The other costs starting around the L-Meg on down, as you know, um, those costs are actually, uh, already built in because you pay that for the L-Meg. It's our share, uh, of the L-Meg costs. It's also our share for, uh, the, the approved projects that have already gone through council. So those are, those costs are the same on either side. I think one thing that you will see here is that our cost for the limited contract service delivery model, when you have to back out five hundred thousand because we included five hundred thousand in the FY nineteen budget, uh, specifically for, uh, equipment and things of that nature. Those costs for the traffic center facility and equipment are actually, uh, unknown in the in-house service model because again, we've got the fair market value, uh, of equipment at two million dollars, but we have not received the appraisal, which we should get this week, for the actual facility which we expect to be, uh, exceed one million dollars. So we didn't include those costs because they are, they are not real cost at this point. And so while there is no statutory requirement for us to get the, uh, equipment cost at one dollars or the facility, at one dollar, or the facility cost at a hundred dollars an acre, it is a very different transition and agreement than the other transitions worth. And so to highlight some of the areas for which costs have not been determined. So in addition to this, uh, different, uh, difference of a little under a million dollars, is those additional costs that are really, uh, where, where the rubber meets the road. So there's approximately seventeen acres of land that at a minimum is going to cost us a million dollars. And that does not include any, uh, refabrication of the building, uh, any of those improvements or remediation. And that appraisal again is due to us on the twenty-fourth, which we do expect to receive. Also, um, it does not include the actual materials related to sign fabrication and the development of any of the materials to carry out the work. It does not also, uh, include facility costs for traffic signal operations, nor does it include the equipment for traffic sign fabrication and signal operation. And so these additional costs are in addition to the ones that we're calling real costs that have already been identified. And so, uh, with that, I'll just kind of, I think we, we broke out some highlights of the performance metrics to just make sure that you see there is a, a big difference in the requirements that we are placing on the contractor. And so one of them is the four week cycle during the growing season for grass cutting and litter cleanup. Also, uh, where a priority one call is considered urgent. So one of them, let's say you have standing water in the roadway, which would be similar to what we had when Hurricane Michael came. Well, within, uh, so they would, it would become a priority repair, uh, and that has to be done within one business day. Same thing that if you have a dead animal in the roadway, I know that you guys have sent some, some information and some issues that we've had with that. So, you know, we've taken all of those things and incorporated into this agreement. Same thing with debris and litter, you know, any hazard to a motorist or something that is severely unsightly has to be done within one business day. Same with sinkholes and tree removals, boiling sidewalks and potholes. In addition, uh, to that, it includes the snow or ice. It includes any sign, um, problems, which, you know, we, we've also received council's feedback and incorporated that as well as down power lines, uh, and power outages, uh, fallen or damaged trees. It specifies that even priority two issues have to be coordinated within seventy-two hours, um, complete within three business days. Uh, and then the priority three, which is your standard, uh, issues that, you know, again, now are already coordinated within seven to ten business days, continue as is. Uh, and then what we have also incorporated is preventive maintenance. And so that priority code is put in when it may be a fall in a damaged tree or some type of activity that needs to be required. And so there's, there's also a priority five, which would be these extensive issues, um, that, that come forth that we can't necessarily always prepare for. And so, uh, I would, of course, like entertaining questions, I don't want to spend as much time on some as the others, but so far, uh, the IGA between P Street Corners that allows us to enter into, uh, negotiations and conversations with Jacob has been, uh, implemented, which again, that is not the final decision of council. What it did is allow us to go out and explore what this model looks like, which we, uh, have now brought back to you guys and included in your package. On the twenty-third, of course, you are receiving this, uh, presentation, questions, et cetera, et cetera, where you can make a decision to approve it or go in another direction. Uh, but if it is approved, then what will happen is we would execute the, uh, contract with Jacob and then authorize them to begin hiring and transitioning staff, uh, from the county. Uh, in addition to that, uh, the county has agreed to make sure that we have as much time as possible to transition. And so we have until November eighteenth, uh, for them to close out services uh, and begin the, the actual work, uh, of service delivery from, uh, Jacob. And with that, I'll entertain any, uh, questions that you might have.
Mr. Colley?
Yes. Um, first, I'm not sure how much we can, we can change this because we already passed this last week, right?
No, no, no. So what you did was you passed the IGA that, so remember, it's basically, we call it piggybacking because most people are familiar with that. You allowing us to, uh, enter into an IGA and it's a no cost IGA. There are no costs associated with it between us and P Street Corners. That allows us to now piggyback and then use their vendor. So you make, you.
We will have to vote on this tonight.
We're asking that you vote on it tonight, yes, sir. But not now, yes.
No, I was, I was a little confused because I thought we voted on it last week. We just voted to go forward with the negotiation and now we're going to vote.
Yes, sir.
So I just want to be clear on that. Um, the, the, so I was, I was against this outsourcing. I just, I felt like we should be able to find positions. We found positions for everyone else. Um, so I felt like we should be able to do that for our lowest paid workers and all the works. But, um, I have been informed that the county is required by resolution to find positions. So I just wonder if you could speak to that.
Absolutely. So the county does have a resolution to where they, uh, they will find it. I think they announced it to that staff. I'm pretty sure they have. Um, I saw something in the, what is it, the board of commissioners meeting where they are going to find roles for all those impacted employees. But I'll tell you, since we don't really control or get into the county business, what we have done is we've partnered not only with the county, but also some other municipalities to make sure that anybody who is impacted, who would not be brought on by us, would also find an opportunity. And I'll say just, you know, going through a transition like this on my own. And I'll say, just, you know, going through a transition like this on my own, sometimes when you stay within a municipality, you may be, uh, a general service worker today, and you may end up doing something else outside of your scope tomorrow, and yes, you have employment, but I just think, you know, while it's not, I don't wanna say it's not our issue, but since it's outside of our realm of control, and knowing not only how council feels, but our staff and myself, we wanna make sure folks have opportunities. We brought some additional resources to the table. And so yes, the county has something, and I'm not extremely well-versed, but their resolution, um, allows them to, anybody impacted by a rift, to find them opportunities. And, and I do believe that they're doing so, because in our meeting, uh, what they mentioned is that they had posted some jobs, and, uh, the HR folks, uh, I, I don't remember exactly what happened, so I don't wanna speak to what happened, but they had identified some roles associated with FIB, and they actually took those down so that they could use those to, uh, have, you know, for people to transition to, uh, who are not, uh, who would, who may not be transitioning. So they do have some additional opportunities. I think between the two of us, I'm confident everybody will be placed.
We're, we're gonna make, we're gonna work together to make sure everybody has jobs, that makes me feel better. The, the last question is though, I, I was surprised by the numbers in the presentation, because it did look like it was less than a million dollar difference just for us to do it ourselves. But what you're saying now is that this eleven numbers, this eleven million dollar number is actually low, and that there's actually that much.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yes, yes.
So what is the final?
So, so from what, we estimated about sixteen million dollars to be a, is what the cost would be more like. So if you, I'll just look here, so if you look here, we don't have all of the four numbers, so I tried to fill in some of the information for you, so you can see just apples to apples with just the information we have, and not putting in those variables, it's about a million dollars. But if you go to the next piece, you know just for, I guess it's fifty-six oh one, uh, directly across the street from here, that's over a million dollars, so now you're at two million. But the materials and the time fabrication, those things are closer to about seven hundred and fifty thousand under that model, so then you got the.
No, I got you, and I want to take up everybody's time, you know, asking questions. I do just wanna say that I would like, um, uh, revised graphics, so that I would have something to share with my constituents, if it's a six million dollar difference, I just think having that laid out would be.
And, and again, we would make sure to get that, but I did wanna highlight, remember, we haven't gotten the appraisal yet, some of these things.
I got you, I got you.
And, and we have here, man, we're discussing this on the, on the regular agenda. And, and having said that, we're also gonna be discussing, uh, fire. On our regular agenda, so I would like to just pull that to the regular agenda.
Jewish presentation as of.
And, and Mr. Baker, I understand you have to pull your presentation.
Yes.
Okay. So that would leave us to, uh, second session.
I make motion for the executive session. For personnel litigation and.
Bill's thing.
Bill's thing.
Probably move the second, in discussion, all those in favor? We'll be back at seven o'clock.